For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, I'll take roll call. We're all here except for Mr. Jeffries. Is there any public comment from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment from the public? Seeing no public. We'll move into our first agenda item, which is minutes approval. Minutes of March 26, 2018. Are there any comments or edits? Yeah, alrighty. Are these all of them? The public hearing on the warrant articles from March 26, 2018. Any comments, edits? From our regular meeting of April 9, 2018? Nope. From the public hearing for 654 and 658 Massachusetts Avenue from April 9? From the public hearing on warrant articles on April 9? And finally, from our regular meeting of April 10? Alrighty, thank you. I'll go right into committee reports. Capital Planning Committee?
Has not met. Stormwater Task Force, we have not met since, oh... No, we have. We met last week. And, um... Yeah, moving forward.
Okay.
Slow but sure. We're down to three members, it appears.
Alright, so if anybody's interested in that, please contact Elaine with a...
Agricultural Commission, that was my first meeting since, uh... Just since November of last year. The Poopapalooza was a hit, a success. There were 30 buckets donated by Abishon Hardware, and 43 participants bought maps. So that was a great success, and it's planned to happen again at least annually, possibly in spring and fall. I'm not quite sure what people would need poop for in the fall, but it was discussed. And the farmer's market is opening up in June. The, uh... There's gonna be hopefully a blacksmith signed up and a wine, winery signed up. But we still have not gotten the confirmation of a vegetable vendor. So, anybody got vegetables, wants to vend at the market, please contact the market manager.
Alright, MJTC?
Uh, yeah, MJTC met, um, last, uh, last Wednesday, as it was. On April 11th, it was your typical meeting, except it was hosted in Westminster this time. They're still doing the rounds. And by the way, Lunenburg volunteered to host it. We have an interest in presenting to our project commission. It mostly was just a more review of the tip and some amendments, nothing that impacts the town of Lunenburg. Westminster reviewed some of their transportation and planning efforts that they've been going through as part of this rolling, uh, rolling location initiative that they're doing. So it was just interesting to hear about what they're doing. They did talk about the UPWP, which is, um, they, the staff that they have works on projects throughout the year, and there is one project that's gonna be done for Lunenburg. It's a walkability and parking study in the Village Center District that we're going to, uh, be working with them on to do analysis of traffic, parking, and sidewalk facilities, and it'll actually, um, complement the complete street prioritization plan for town Lunenburg. So that was the most interesting thing there. And then there's, uh, next meeting is, oh, I don't have it handy here. But the next meeting is, um, in May, I believe. So it should be the second one, stay of May.
That's it?
That's it.
Um, MRPC?
Sorry, May night.
Sorry.
It's May night.
Uh, I believe Michael made it to the last MRPC meeting, so I can't really speak to that meeting specifically, but the next one is May 3rd. I intend to make the May 3rd one. They're gonna elect the executive board and do some, I'm sure, rearranging. Just cover usual topics. And I just received an email last week that Open Space Ad hoc Committee is gonna be meeting again to discuss the Open Space Plan. Minimum. I'm not sure if there's anything specific that there, you know, any, anything on the agenda that we need to cover for, um, you know, Chapterland or anything that's coming up, so... I assume it's just that.
Alright.
Don't forget the date.
May 9.
May 9, thank you.
Uh, Open Space?
Yeah, that was it.
That was it, okay. Charter Review Committee, Michael Ray is not here. Green Communities Task Force, we have not met. We're tentatively gonna meet this Thursday, but I don't think it made the agenda, so, um... We're gonna be discussing the streetlight buyback and LED upgrade to those. We did receive some information regarding the costs associated with that, which we'll be discussing at the meeting, so... And that's it. Um, Director's Items?
Uh, we've got plans for you to sign, which we can do at the end of the meeting unless you guys wanna bore everybody with both of them watching you sign plans for 654 Mass Ave. As you know, Tri-Town is gonna be on from May 14. They've made their formal filing, uh, and it didn't make the agenda because I hadn't finalized it yet or put the agenda together, but I met with MRPC about a DLTA project. They're gonna be doing a permitting guidebook for people who wanna permit things in town. So it's sort of, uh, permitting for dummies in Lunenburg. So what'll probably happen is I'll work with them and give them a bunch of information. They'll come in, speak to you guys, uh, put something together in draft, come back and work through it with you guys so that, uh, everybody's on the same page about what it looks like and who it's for and how it works. So this is all at no cost to us through the DLTA program. There are two election-related items coming up. On May 3rd, at the Lunenburg Middle High School, there is a Board of Selectmen candidates, I think they're calling it a debate. I don't know who's sponsoring it or what the, uh, format is, but the BOs candidates will be there that night. I believe the ledger's involved in some manner. Then on May 9, at the Eagle House from 3:30 to 5, there's a open forum for all candidates for any position on the ballot to come and, uh, shake babies and kiss hands and meet people and, uh, you know, just get their face out there. I think they're looking for people to let them know that they're coming, uh, but, you know, it's an open, public thing, so... And then finally, uh, we've been foisted upon us the medical, or, I'm sorry, uh, non-medical marijuana, and we need to start identifying how we wanna move forward. We talked about, uh, Board talked about doing a survey, and, um, I'm happy to do that. I wanna understand what the Board's looking for from the survey, so if you guys wanna send me some questions, or even if you don't wanna send me questions, if you wanna send me categories or topics or areas of, this is what we wanna know, we can put together a draft survey. We have access to the Survey Monkey account, and we can, you know, have it hooten and holler and then, um, getting people's input on, on what we want. I did forward you a couple of documents from the Cannabis Control Commission. There's guidance on types of marijuana establishments and a final guidance document for municipalities. And what those have in them, uh, is just sort of the state's position on a lot of this stuff. I think the licensing stuff is probably more for people who are looking to, uh, be purveyors of marijuana or marijuana establishments in some manner, but I felt like it was good information that was worth sort of understanding where they're coming from. The guidance for municipalities is, I think, where we're going to be, uh, getting really what we need. And I think within that is a series of definitions that honestly, I think we should just pick up and move into the bylaw. And then using those definitions, code them in as uses, and identify where, how, when, all that kinda stuff. I also included two, um, proposed bylaws. One from the town of Brookline and one from the town of Northborough. Brookline's is rather extensive, covers a variety of different things, and Northborough's is really just zoning. And what you'll see, if you look through Brookline's, is what they're doing is they're taking their existing, uh, registered marijuana dispensary bylaw and sort of morphing it into an all-encompassing marijuana bylaw. And, you know, this is an interesting approach, and I think what we're seeing from the state is the Department of Public Health is starting to move their licensing process over to the Cannabis Control Commission. And we're going to start to see the Cannabis Control Commission, uh, start to take over medical marijuana as well. Using the DPH rules, regulations. There's been some question, and I don't think there's ever been an answer to it, whether or not, um... So, right now, uh, medical marijuana is a vertical license. So you get one license and you do all facets of medical marijuana. You grow it, you process it, you sell it, uh, all of that kinda stuff. You, you create all of the products that you're putting out there. With the adult-use marijuana, it's more à la carte. You say, "I only wanna sell marijuana. I don't wanna grow it. I don't wanna do anything. I just want it to come into my store. I wanna put it on the shelf, and I wanna take your money." Or you say, "I only wanna grow it. I don't wanna do any of this other business." And then, you know, you can sell your marijuana to whoever has a license. You could decide, "I only want to transport it," and you could buy a bunch of armored cars and, you know, hire a bunch of people and say, "We just drive marijuana around the state." Or you can mix any, anything therein into however you wanna do it. You just get a separate license for each one. Whether or not medical is gonna end up going down that route in the long term, I don't think anybody's really nailed down. So what it would do, what we would potentially do is take our current registered marijuana dispensary bylaw as a framework and work in some of these other types, uh, and allow them in specific areas, uh, using some of the permitting process that we already have in place, maybe morphing some of that, maybe adding some, taking some away. So, uh, we're not gonna solve this tonight. It's more getting the information out there and starting the talking about it. We've had a lot of discussion about the cultivation of medical marijuana in residential areas. I imagine residential areas are gonna be somewhere that we don't wanna allow the cultivation of recreational. My understanding of the way the law is written or the regulations are written is that indoor and outdoor cultivation are required, and are not required, are allowed, under the adult use. And outdoor cultivation, or cultivation is a type of marijuana establishment. I haven't gotten a firm answer whether or not, uh, the prohibition of outdoor cultivation would qualify as a ban on the cultivation establishment and whether that would require ballot initiative or not. I've heard different lawyers say different things. So it, it's something I wanna talk with Town Council over a little bit further, uh, but I think it's been made fairly clear that there's a, an argument for not cultivating outdoors, uh, mostly due to impact to surrounding areas. And maybe that gets solved by where cultivation is allowed. Maybe a, maybe we create a series of marijuana overlay districts that allow different cult, different parts of, different types of establishments. I'm, I don't know that any of this really makes sense. I'm just kind of throwing food for thought out there, uh, so that you guys can start to, you know, move in a direction that gets us going towards getting this ready for fall. 'Cause that's ultimately what it needs to be ready for. I don't know if you guys have any...
Well, just have a quick, a couple of quick questions.
That's ours, yeah.
The, I see that host community agreements are actually required?
They are mandatory for non-medical marijuana establishments.
Yeah. And who will establish the cost? Because I see that only 3% of gross sales may be collected, but they have to go directly to offsetting costs. So who's gonna establish costs?
So this is sort of, uh... This is one of those things that people write into laws that are maybe not always the most thought out. I think what you'll see, and it says it's a five-year maximum for the host community agreement. There's some, there's been some discussion at forums I've been to where, uh, what the, the advice that they've sort of given in general, not specific to any community, is take what they'll give you at the beginning, and a lot of, a lot of times what you're gonna find is the first people to do this, the front line is gonna say, "Here's your 3%, just take it. We, we wanna be in your good graces." And then they advise that you track costs over the life of the five years. There's some disagreement or discussion about whether at the end of five years you renegotiate and you get another five years, or whether it's just a one-time, five-year, that's all you get. So I think what they're saying is if, if we had zoning in place and somebody showed up to the selectman and said, "I wanna, I wanna put cultivation only in. I'm gonna build it out of the furthest reaches of town. I'm gonna build a 10-foot concrete wall with barbed wire around my facility. It's all gonna be inside." I think that, you know, my impact on the community is gonna be $500,000. And $500,000 is 1.25 of my gross, which is probably fairly low, but... And the town said, "No, we want 3%." They would say, "Okay, well, show me where that 3% comes from," and you could, you know, it could, it could turn into an argument.
Sure.
I don't think that in the early stages, that's a likely scenario.
Right.
I think, you know...
They might be first in.
I mean, it's like, it's like the old Looney Tunes cartoon. There's dollar signs popping out of people's eyes, and they're, they're like, "We're just gonna give you whatever you want, 3% loss. We'll just write it into the budget. What? Just take it." In five years, after theoretically this, you know, has taken root and has, there's some significant data, and if there is the potential for renegotiation, they're saying, "Keep track of those costs," so you can say, "Here's what our real costs are."
Yeah.
And maybe it's not 3%, but you can actually justify saying, "We need $1.2 million, not $500,000."
Right.
So, you know... Sorry.
Can we incorporate a discussion with the Board of Selectmen under economic development in regards to how we negotiate those deals or what our roles are? 'Cause, well, again, so say they build a facility and have a host community agreement, and then they expand. I would like there, for there to be an opportunity to us to renegotiate that host community agreement and possibly extend the, the five years to that with the expansion.
Like, that's where you definitely would have to justify it. You'd have to be tracking things to say...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that there's a couple of, there's a couple of... There's a couple of angles to that, too. This Board doesn't negotiate host community agreements.
I understand.
The financial impact is wholly under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. The extension of the five years into another five years, I think, is a legal question. The Town Council would probably weigh in on, and...
But, but, sorry to interrupt, but we permit them, so I'd like to be there, to have, to be some dialogue amongst ourselves and the Board of Selectmen during, just so we're on the same page as to what, you know what I mean? I don't...
But I don't know that the permitting and the host community agreement are tied together. They're required by law to have a host community agreement. And I think, like we saw with, with solar, the host community agreements are generally tied to something that is measurable. So with the solar, it's production. With the marijuana, it's gross income. So they're submitting some manner of receipt that is legal that, that 3% gets based off of. So one would infer that if, you know, let's, let's say year one, their gross receipts are $1 million, and year two, they build an expansion that gets permitted, and their gross receipts are $2 million, that 3% doubles. So, I mean, it's certainly something, there's never a harm in having the conversation. But I also want us, as a, as a group, to be cognizant that we're, we would be providing input, and the Board of Selectmen could say, "Thanks, but we got this." Uh, and, you know, I don't want it to be a feudal exercise. And I want, and maybe you guys show up and they're like, "Oh, yeah, no, this is great. Let's figure out how we can work, you know, work this so that they're doing this and you're doing this," and, and they might, like, again, just say, "We, we, we love that you guys are here. We thank your support, you know, but we got this." And I just want it to be, you know...
Make sure you bring your sand for pounding.
Again, I, and, and maybe the selectman won't say that. Maybe it's a holy, you know, kumbaya moment.
I have another question about the taxes. A municipality accepts the local sales tax option.
Correct.
They collect a 3% tax. Why is it optional and why would we not?
Well, if you prohibit them, there's no reason to accept it.
Oh, yes.
If you think, "Hey, we love marijuana. Let's all hang out and dance around the fire. We don't care about the 3%," uh, maybe you don't. Most communities are, and it's, it's usually general bylaw. It's like the meals tax opt-in. I mean, there's a, a ton of communities who are just now kinda getting around to a meals tax opt-in. I mean, not that it's free money, but it's kinda free money.
Yeah.
Can we, is it appropriate to... I want people to know that we're gonna be discussing this and be, gonna be drafting this policy, because I don't wanna get to November Town Meeting and have people go, "Why did you do this?" and "Why did you do that?"
Well, since we don't have anything, that's kinda why I threw it on tonight.
Exactly. So is it appropriate to give a, well, give a handout at Town Meeting, 'cause that's where people go, or just put it even, post it to the Town website, just informing them that we're going to be talking about this and we're gonna be drafting policy? 'Cause obviously, not a tremendous amount of people watch these meetings, but I'd like to advertise it somehow and have people show up and tell us what they think. I mean, and I think, well, no, I understand.
A date.
Right.
See how many people show up.
Again, I don't want them running in here at the end of a meeting and...
Yeah, oh, no, I, I...
You know, so I... And this is gonna be somewhat of a hot-button issue, I think, so... Especially when it comes to what happens in residential neighborhoods. And as far as the overall, I think it's, I always thought we should take a holistic approach to both of them, because the plant's gonna know how it's classified, when it's being grown, whether it's being grown as medical or, or recreational. I mean, you're putting a seed in the ground and it's growing. I mean, it's not gonna know the difference, so...
I, I understand.
Distribution is a different, different subject.
To ask this question of you, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So you don't really have, we don't have a plan yet for proceeding, right? We don't, we don't have anything?
No.
They, I mean, you know, in terms of educating the public, getting to a determination of what we wanna see in town, you know, whether we want an outright ban, whether we wanna limit the number, whether we wanted to, you know, we have no, nothing in place yet. That's where we're trying to go.
Correct.
Okay.
How did the town vote?
Uh, I think it was 56-44 pro. Yeah.
Not, not a landslide either way, huh?
No, and, you know, I think to, to your point, Dave, uh, we should limit. We should limit above the 20%, but, you know, to a reasonable number. I mean, I think, I think we have 11 package licenses, so if we limited to three retail establishments, you know, you're, you're not outright banning it. You're not into the, "Oh, well, it's less than 20%," and...
Well, this is where I'm going. I mean, I don't believe in, you know, in, in complete democracy, you know, open democracy. I believe, you know, I mean, we're, we were charged with, you know, having a position and sticking with it, right? So I don't know how much information we wanna, you know, share and get feedback. How long you want this to go on, you know what I mean? 'Cause you could go on for a year or more, just figuring out how the community feels about it.
I'd like to...
I mean, there's so many options available. You're like, it's almost an open book, you know? You can basically come up with whatever you, you know, within the confines of...
Yeah. I, I think, you know, if you were to ask the question, I would say, "You should have some initial meeting," or "We should have some initial meeting in June, when people are still here, kids are still in school. You can kind of at least scare people..."
Kind of a workshop?
Yeah, workshop, public meeting, whatever. With an eye on pumping out a draft early September. So that people come back and the kids are back in school and you scare them with pot again, and say, "Here's our draft," and that still gives you, you know, two months to pivot before you have to nail down a final for, for a November-ish Town Meeting.
Okay.
And have we, I thought we had discussed in the past reaching out to Chief Marino. Have we done that, or...
We haven't. Again, I wanted to, to sort of see where the Board is. I think, I, I did mention it to the chief that he wanted, you know, that you guys wanted him to come in and talk. He said, "Just tell me when, I'll be there." So he's open to the idea. I haven't made any formal plans to have him come in.
Right. But maybe in that June meeting would be a good time, or...
It might even be worth it to do it ahead of time.
Can we get these, at least, 'cause these are very well-written, can we get these on the, on our site?
Yeah.
So we can direct people to those and then just... 'Cause, you know, like, I, I mean, I would love to come in and have some kind of agreement that we all say, you know, "We've reviewed everything and here's what we think would be best." "But here's the information. If you wanna come into our workshop and tell us we're wrong, tell us we're wrong."
That's what I'm trying to get you guys to start doing, is thinking about what you want, where you might want it. And I, I'm not saying you shouldn't change with what people come in and say, but the sooner you start sort of taking a stance, the easier it is to have that dialogue.
Okay.
You know, "We've been reviewing this. We think this." The, and I'll send you a link to, um, the Mass Association of Regional Planning Agencies, MARPA, their website. They've been sort of curating information throughout, uh, and they have some, some good information.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know if any of you are still in contact with Jen Flanagan. She's one of the commissioners. I think she will often take questions. We can... When the last forum I went to, I spoke to Commissioner Doyle of the Cannabis Control Commission. She said they weren't at the point where they were going out to individual communities yet. And I think that bylaw development would be something they probably wouldn't come and speak about, uh, but the Cannabis Control Commission puts information out daily. They meet like crazy, and, and there's a lot of stuff on their website. Some of it's kind of banal, you know, meeting minutes and day-to-day operation stuff of what they happened to do that day, uh, but they're, they're doing their best to be as transparent as possible, so they don't get, uh, some of the accusations that maybe have fallen on DPH when they first started trying to put this stuff together. Other questions about pot?
Like specifically about different varieties?
I couldn't help you there. Greg? Who's the guru? Uh, and then the, the other item is, um, the inconsistency in the Town Meeting article. So in going through and trying to prepare the handouts, I'm sorry, did you have something, Ken?
No.
Oh.
Topic shift. Put my marijuana aside. Try to refocus.
Do you want a black light? So...
Can I eat Doritos?
In, uh, in going through the Town Meeting information, uh, the use table has auto sales, and the corresponding definition is for auto body repair. And without looking at them side by side, going through it, I, I, you know, I'm not sure how I missed it, but I missed it. So we'll have to make an amendment on the floor. I can't imagine it would be a troublesome amendment. I sent two sort of... I sent two sort of standard definitions for auto sales. I, I lean towards the first one and maybe taking, uh, recreational vehicles and boats out of it. Uh, since we have a boat service yard, uh, definition and I don't know that, that boats are necessarily the, the most analogous things to auto sales. And recreational vehicles are kind of an animal all on their own.
This was a separate mail?
It was the actual email. It was in the, the body of the email that, um, went with the, the marijuana.
Oh, geez, what do I do with that?
It's right here.
Nope. Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I think one sounds good. I like one, two gets too weird all, right off the bat.
Yeah.
Two, possibly three.
Would they be able to do repairs other than that they sell or lease? I think we need to expand on that because a lot, a lot of service stations sell cars.
Well, but the primary use.
Yeah, but still, I think they would, even dealerships take in other, other.
Maybe provide onsite facilities for the repair and service of vehicles as an accessory use.
Right.
Yeah, I was just saying, same thing. Thank you.
Are you going to make a note of that?
Yes. Yes. And again, striking boats and recreational vehicles?
Yeah.
Well, what about like, well, what about like Mass Ave Motorsports? Would they be considered, what kind of dealership would they be?
They sell motorcycles.
Yeah.
Okay.
They also sell recreational vehicles.
I think that means, you know, campers.
I was going to say, I think recreational vehicle, I think.
But how would they be defined under the bylaw? Like.
I would define them as auto sales.
As auto sales, okay.
Really?
What would you define them as?
Recreational vehicle. Powersports, consider that a, uh, auto sale?
Well, I mean, they span from motorcycles to like Gators, right?
What if they just sold snowmobiles? Would they still be an auto sales establishment?
Yeah.
Probably, because they're still doing, they're, they're selling them or leasing them and then they're going to do repairs on them, right?
Right, but just auto, just auto sales just seems odd for a powersport facility.
Well, can't you just, uh, right next to motorcycles in parentheses, put in, you know, any motorsports?
Or we could say recreational vehicles without living space?
Powersport vehicles, I guess, would cover it.
Yeah.
Or we could do newer used on or off-road automobiles. Cause under the definition of, I just quickly looked up, it says a road vehicle is under the definition of an automobile. So if we put an on or off-road automobile, that would encompass like four-wheelers and.
Technically, they're OHRVs, they're Off-Highway Recreational Vehicles. That's the state definition of the.
Then how about we call it?
Not last month on 93, they weren't.
Pardon?
Not last month on 93, they weren't. Did you see that? Guys from Boston were riding all their four-wheelers down the, down 93. Missed that?
Jeez. Yeah, I think it's OHRV, right? That's what they're from?
Yeah.
Off-highway recreational vehicle.
Okay, then, well, I'll, instead of putting in powersports, we'll call them off-highway recreational vehicles.
That's fine.
Cause that, what I don't want is someone is flagged to be like, "Oh, hey, let's go to Lunenburg and open an RV store." I mean, they're a reputable dealer, but that's a, you know, that's a.
Yeah. Off-highway recreational vehicle makes it not confused with a Winnebago.
Correct.
So then the second sentence there was, is an automobile dealership. Does that kind of sound exclusive of the additional?
Well, not if we define. How about we just take automobile out and say, "A dealership."
Very good one, good catch.
"May maintain an inventory of their vehicles for sale or lease either onsite or at a nearby location and may provide onsite facilities for the repair and service of vehicles as an accessory use."
Yep.
Excellent, Dave. Okay. I'll type that up and have it ready for town meetings so no one has to try and write it on Kathy's little sheet.
Can we just bring a stapler and staple it to the amendment? Okay. See attached. Clear up everything for.
So the interesting thing about the second definition is it does prevent Joe homeowner from selling five used cars on his yard.
Don't, isn't there already a limitation for three cars sold a year? You have to be a dealer somewhere in the bylaws?
I don't know that bylaw. Do you hear? Or is it Massachusetts?
I remember, I remember something about more than three vehicles a year that you sell, you have to have some authorization.
In a general bylaw?
Um, I'm not sure. It just sticks in my head. Honestly, can't remember.
I didn't know that.
We have had several small.
It may not be true. It's just in my mind. It's what I remembered here. Doesn't really specify because it says for sale of more than two at a time. I mean, not that we're, you know what I mean? Cause you, if you sell one car and three months later you sell another car, then three months later you sell another car, you know? It's, I mean.
Then on your 12th month, you can sell three more.
Right. But it eliminates, like Ken said, I mean, if they have one car out there for sale, it's kind of guy in his backyard fixing up a car and selling it.
You're going to be permitting these.
But if they're having three to five cars out there, then.
You're permitted.
There is a maximum number of unregistered vehicles you can have on your property, right?
Yeah, it's one.
In Lunenburg, it's one.
Unless you get special dispensation.
Why would you get special dispensation?
Well, if you had, and that's stored outside. You can, you, without the, I think it's without the permission of, I think it might be the zoning board of the Board of Selectmen. It's in the bylaw. I mean, let's say your kid turned, let's say you've got a, you know, 65 Impala that you're fixing up and it's out in the driveway under a tarp and your kid turns 16 in six months and you got a good deal on a, you know, used Subaru and.
Yeah, no, I understand.
There, there are times where they'll allow it and usually it's for a fixed period of time and you have to renew it annually and.
There are a few that have like number of abandoned vehicles on their property that they salvage parts out of and stuff.
Some of them don't even salvage parts out of them.
So that's against Lunenburg bylaws, huh?
Yes. If it's brought to someone's attention, they certainly could.
Well, I had one, but I got rid of it, so. Yeah, well, I offered it to you, you didn't make it, so.
Okay, all right, guys.
All right. So are we on to notices and communications?
Yeah.
Are there any, they were scandalous today?
They were all scandalous, yeah.
Okay. Um, meeting schedule? We have town meeting, May 5th. I am probably not going to be able to be there, so I'm hoping that we will be able to. I can forward any comments, I guess, to Adam, but we've already endorsed our warrant articles, so. Falls on you, Matt, if anything happens.
All right.
Um, May 14th, we have the public hearing for Tri-Town Landing.
That'll be your last meeting in May.
Okay, that.
Cause the 28th is a holiday.
Michael Ray's last meeting with us more than likely as well, so.
What you call it?
Yes, what you call it.
And the election is.
Yeah, that was cool, something like that.
Yeah, and the election is May 15th. Isn't it?
Is there any more public comment from the board?
Yes. Uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, the people down in, uh, in our neck of the woods have been working hard on that on the park down there. I forget the name of it.
Wallace Park.
And they're looking for volunteers, I think, May 1st?
Second and third.
Second and third, sorry, second and third.
Or maybe third and fourth. It's a Thursday, Friday.
Spreading mulch and unloading. So if anyone wants to volunteer and help out with that, they've really, they've, you know, they kind of came together as a community down there and really pushed the thing forward. And it'd be nice to, if you, if you're around, to, uh, offer some support.
They're weekdays?
Yeah, it's a Thursday, Friday, I think.
Any other public comment from the board?
Well, I do, I do have, um, I, I was, I was appointed, so I'm a voting member of AGCOM now. And I will, I will remain the, uh, I will remain giving my committee report, of course. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. And as such, I think there are some, um, there are a number of things that we've tried to get together to get on the warrant that I have in the back of my mind felt that planning could have done or at least helped out with. And I, I will be bringing those forward in the future, just to get, to get your idea on, on, on what it may or may not have to do with planning.
Okay.
So I just wanted to throw a shameless plug out and thank you to the Lunenburg Snow Riders. They, um, hosted a, um, a trash pickup day on Earth Day this past Sunday. Where they spent the whole morning out by Pearl Brook State Park, collecting trash on the trails and along the sides of the road and gathered two full pickup trucks filled with trash bags with trash in it. They'll probably make the, the local paper, I'm not sure, but it's been posted on Facebook. So quite a few people came out, participated and it worked out, uh, really, really well. So thanks to them.
Excellent. Any public comment from the public? Seeing none? Ongoing items, the signed bylaw, um, economic development? Do we have any more?
We had the meeting, no, not that I'm aware of. We had the meeting on the 10th, I think, um, you know, the selectmen have committed to putting that on as an agenda item going forward, the creation of the Economic Development Committee. Excuse me, I expect that will happen after the election. I would imagine whomever gets appointed to, or elected to the, the fifth seat, all of you are right that they would get their input in, in the charge and makeup of that committee.
Okay.
Has AGCOM started reaching out about the co-op?
I'm sorry?
Has AGCOM started any outreach about the co-op and interest amongst local farmers for it?
Um, we're still working on the farmer's list and that's going to require contacting every single person we put on that list because it's important that we don't publish something that, right?
Yeah.
Um, but the, the co-op discussion has been ongoing for a couple of years now.
And I think those are really the two big things. And I think once those start to come together, the, the third item of sort of discussing what ag is and how it, how it gets sold and distributed and, uh, thought about as part of the economic development sphere is really going to be predicated on, you know, what the Economic Development Committee looks like and, and if farmers are interested and who's interested in, in that co-op idea.
All right. Uh, board comments and concerns?
Yeah, what's with the dumpster?
Uh, they're cleaning the attic out.
Oh, okay.
The whole building's going to collapse if they don't take the records out. No, it's a, they, there's a lot of old records up there and they've.
Like the White Album, that kind of record?
Kind of, yeah.
Just, I had a question. I know we had discussed Flat Hill at our last meeting. Can we, or is that going to be on the agenda somewhere?
If you would.
Either ongoing items, I guess?
Yeah.
And that way we can at least discuss it if need be. And then is there any update as to Asian Imperial and their progress? They went to CONCOM, I believe.
Uh, I believe they got a negative RDA from CONCOM. I have not heard, uh, actually, um, I think that they are bidding contractors right now.
Okay.
I don't know that, you know, I, I imagine she's hot to get it done and just be done with it. I'm sure it's just one more thing she has to worry about with having opened a new restaurant recently as well.
All right, that's it from me. Accept the motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 What a meeting on record, ever.
We need to sign plans.